Welcome to our swearing in ceremony. Your Honorable Judge Dewayne Locklear. And of course he will be swearing in. Re-elected Board of Supervisors Jeremy Taylor.
We have a slow mover. You raise your right hand, please. Do you, Jeremy J. Taylor solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa? And that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the Office of County Board of Supervisors in Woodbury County, Iowa, as now or hereafter required by law?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judge.
You're welcome. Supervisor. You raise your right hand. Do you, Matthew A. Young solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa? And that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the Office of County Board of Supervisors in Woodbury County, Iowa, as now or hereafter required by law? If you raise your right hand. Do you, Patrick Jennings solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa? And that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the Office of County Attorney in Woodbury County, Iowa, as now or hereafter required by law? Treasurer Blake. You raise your right hand. Do you, Michael R. Blake solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa? And that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the Office of County Treasurer in Woodbury County, Iowa, as now or hereafter required by law?
Thank you, Your Honor. We'll call this meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you very much. Please silence phones, pagers, and other devices. Item seven, adoption of current Board of Supervisors bylaws.
I'll move it.
I'll move it.
Second for discussion.
Say that again, please.
All second for discussion.
Motion by Radig, second by Taylor, for discussion.
Just wanted to see if there's anything that's pertinent or relevant that's changed from previous bylaws, or if everything's the same.
Everything is the same. Everything is the same that's been submitted, so if you adopt them, they've remained the same. We did have a discussion with a few folks, and we just left it that if you wanted to bring it up to later date, there are ways to amend those bylaws in a regular meeting that you can set aside on the agenda. One of the items of discussion that I brought up was just about electronic participation. If anybody's interested in bringing that to a discussion, I'll work with them and put together the bylaws and put it on the agenda at a later date.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Passes five to zero. Item eight, election of temporary chair to preside over election of chairperson.
I would nominate Supervisor and current Chairman Rocky DeWitt.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five to zero. Election of chairperson. I would nominate Keith Radig to be chairman.
Second.
Just need to be a roll call, Mr. Gill.
It does not.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Passes five to zero.
Trade spots now, or you want?
Yes.
All right.
You want this spot?
Nope.
I think I'll turn them all around and we just slide them back.
Thank you, sir.
Take position.
There is always that urge to just slam it down right when you sit down. Moving on to the election of vice chair, I'll move Jeremy Taylor.
Second.
All right. No other nominations? Go ahead and vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed say nay. All right, that passes five to zero. Moving on to number 11, citizen concerns. This is for items not on the agenda. Most of the citizens in the room being media, media concerns, I guess. All right, moving on to item 12, approval of the agenda. I'll move that.
Second.
Motion by Radig, second by Taylor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? All right, moving on to the consent agenda. Items 13 through 19 constitute a consent agenda of routine action items to be considered by one motion. Items passed unanimously unless a separate vote is requested by a board member. Item 13, approval of the minutes of the December 26, 2018 meeting. Item 14, approval of claims. Item 15, appointments of A, the county engineer is Mark Nara. B, the county medical examiner, Dr. Julie, oh, I don't know, Brenner?
Brenner.
Brenner. Sorry, Julie, if that's not correct. C, county weed commissioner, Jared Jepson. D, county official newspapers, which were listed in the backup material. E, county representation of the third judicial Department of Correctional Services. Moving on to item 16, the approval of various boards and commissions. We got A, the Conservation Board. B, Suland District Board of Health. C, commission to assess damages. Item 17, Human Resources, Melissa Thomas, authorized chairman to sign property and casualty policies with one beacon and traveler's insurance for calendar years 2019. Was this something, this was planned before, or is this an extension?
This is something that happens every year.
Okay. Item 18, public bidder, Heather Satterwhite. A, approval of notice of property sale resolution for parcel 894-729-177013, also known as 423 Myrtle Street, for Tuesday, January 15 at 4:35 PM. Approval, item B, approval notice property sale resolution for parcel, also known as 836 Seventeenth Street, for Tuesday, January 15 at 4:37 PM. Item 19, secondary roads, Mark Nara. Consideration, A, consideration of a resolution authorizing the county engineer to close roads for construction, maintenance, and emergencies during 2019. And B, consideration of resolution authorizing the county engineer to execute certification of completion of work on federal aid, state aid, and farm-to-market construction during 2019. Any questions on any items on the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and move the consent agenda.
Second.
Moved by Radig, second by DeWitt. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes five to zero. Moving on to item 20, item by Jeremy Taylor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. This is a kind of a committee meeting slash update on the transition to regionalization with Rolling Hills, which, as you know, has taken place over the past year and a half. We have with us today Dawn Mensah, the Rolling Hills CEO. Wanted you as a board to have a chance to be introduced to her, as well as give you sort of an update of the last regional governance board meeting, and asked Dawn to perhaps make some comments and field any questions, if that's fair. So, I gave you a summation in the backup material, Rolling Hills at their governance board meeting on December 27, voted on non-core funding requests. This will allow us to clearly discern a budget, which is currently at $3,444,687. That includes roughly $323,000 in new core services, as you know. The legislature has mandated some services be added through recent legislation. And also, I think graciously, grandfather's in a 250% over-poverty level on reimbursements, which was our past practice. Their region was at 150%. And so, I think that that shows good flexibility in understanding some of where we've come from and taking that into account, as well as $70,000 to the Friendship House and Suland Mental Health's community support, which will most likely still be given to Suland Mental Health, though maybe a variation into what line item that fits. Just a couple of other salient points. Woodbury County, you know, must cover its full expenses through the mental health levy and whatever distribution from our previous region that rightly belongs to Woodbury County taxpayers. Rolling Hills had initially set up to have a region reserve, as well as seven individual county reserves. And initially, when we were going to come in with $1 million plus our 25%, it was because we needed to be at that 25% parity, we thought, with the region reserve and with all of their individual seven county reserves. What they've learned since is that DHS and the Department of Management isn't seeing that they have to be at 25% in all seven county reserves and the region reserve, but as an aggregate, which means that those seven counties will lower their respective levies to send or buy down that reserve level, and that we are not going to be asked as much money going in, which I think is also a positive thing. They are targeting to be at 30%, and we are targeting to be at 30%. And here's why that's important. The way the code is set up is that it's not clawed back to the state or scooped, but it will be dollar-for-dollar property tax relief in future years on an equitable basis. So if all seven counties end with 30%, and we end with 30%, and we're mandated to be at 20%, well then the next year, we can all realize property tax relief on an equitable basis. The figure that we're all working with right now is a contribution of 30%, which is right around $1,033,000, which is positive. So some of the numbers are in there. Go through some of the line items. They approved Schessler Hall at the full request of $70,661 for 19 beds. The Ark of Woodbury County, which was something that many of us often heard was definitely going to be cut, and many naysayers said Rolling Hills has already made this decision without giving Rolling Hills a chance to make the decision, fully funded their request of $60,000. And there's even some interest in some other counties, like Cherokee and others, being able to take advantage of that. And if our partners of yesteryear, Sewer Plymouth, wanted to as well, we could offer that to them, perhaps on a per capita or a per usage basis. The Sanford Center was funded at half of the request, at $130,000. And Suland Mental Health agreed that they could provide $306,254 in school-based services with an allocation of $127,337. Well, how can you get $306,000 some odd dollars of services with only $127,000 from the county? It's because you'll bill private insurance and Medicaid for those costs. So, we see in this an ability to still fund at about an equal level the school-based services. And you may have seen in the paper, the $777,000 request. It's important to remember that this would be new county money that would be backfilling an expiring federal grant, something that I don't think we would do as a county, and that is resisted by our seven new county partners as well. And so that's kind of an overview of the meeting, and I just invite Dawn to come up and say a few words and field any questions, if that's all right.
Thank you for allowing me to come up and just introduce myself. This has been quite a journey this past year. There's been a lot of work that's been put into this. I want to commend Jeremy for all of the work that he has done in helping us to pursue a partnership with Woodbury County. And we are still in the process of working on budget. This has been a very challenging budget year for us, because in addition to bringing on another county next year, with Jeremy's indication earlier about the need to reduce our reserve balances down, at the same time, I'm trying to work on getting all the counties in the region down to that 30% level as an aggregate, and then also making sure we have enough dollars included to bring Woodbury County in, so that we, as a region, are going to be financially solvent at the end of the year. And we're not the only region that is going to be facing that. That's all the regions across the state. We're hoping that this can be looked at on a legislative basis in the 2019 session, and that we can make some changes, as Jeremy said, to get to 30% as a safety net for us versus a 20 or 25%, depending on your population size of your region. So, I'm just, I'm glad to be here. It's nice to meet you all, and if there's any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
One quick question. If she's introduced Pat, do I have to request that she say her name and everything?
Yes.
Okay.
Dawn Mensah, Rolling Hills CEO.
Thank you.
Too late, had to do that first. It was nothing else.
I knew. I'll get it next time. Any other questions?
Excited to have you as our CEO.
Thank you.
I really look forward to this. I had a list of things from two years ago that I really wanted to see done on the county board, and one of those was, you know, let's fix our mental health region issues. And it sure got uglier before. It's getting better, but it's getting a lot better now, and I'm looking forward to this. So, that was number one on the list, and I'm glad to see it's happening, so.
It will work.
Yes.
I'm confident that this will work.
I think having a bigger region like this, and more counties pooling money together, I think it's going to provide better services for everyone involved. And seeing all those core services now, you know, being out there on the horizon rather than, you know, question marks.
Absolutely.
I'm really glad to see that.
Yes, we would not have the capability of developing the core services without the economy of scale, especially with bringing Woodbury County into our region. And that was one of the contributing factors that our board based their decision on.
Could you talk just a little bit? I didn't want to get into something, because, you know, it's not my background, but mobile response and what Plains Area is doing, and I think this is, to me, some of the excitement of looking at these seven counties and what they're doing and seeing if that's a potential here in Woodbury County, you know, as someone like maybe Suland Mental Health and Plains discusses. Can you talk about what mobile crisis is and what they're doing, just a little bit? Because I think it's good for us to look at as a possibility.
Well, I think, you know, just to start off by saying, I think that with the services that we provide within our region and what Woodbury County has, there's a lot of similarities, but there's differences, and I think we have the capability of benefiting from each other. But as far as mobile crisis response, that's been one of our initiatives we've been working towards in the past couple of years. It's going to be starting with Plains Area Mental Health Center, July 1 of this year. And it allows for a person that is in crisis to be accompanied or be called out by law enforcement in that crisis, and have that onsite assessment, and maybe de-escalate a situation that potentially, you know, an individual may not have to be seen at the ER or at the hospital. It's just a situation that can be de-escalated right out in the person's home or wherever they are in the community. So we are fully funding the cost of that program throughout the region until they can start receiving their Medicaid payments, hopefully through the MCOs, as we get started on July 1. And so, we have an opportunity for Suland Mental Health Center to partner with us on development of mobile crisis at some point. And Plains Area, the CEOs of Plains Area and Suland Mental Health Center have already had a discussion about working together in some fashion to expand that service to Woodbury County.
So in that, you could be called by the sheriff or the law enforcement to accompany? And is, my understanding, there's a greater deflection rate from going to the ER and more capacity building at the crisis homes, is that?
Right, and we've had, Southwest Iowa MHDS region has had a 90% deflection rate on their commitments, and people needing hospitalization by use of mobile crisis. We, through our process within Rolling Hills, have not, we've contracted with integrated telehealth partners to do onsite assessments or have the person assessed in the ERs. We are not getting those types of deflection rates, because they are using national doctors. The majority of them are based out of Florida. Now, it's been a huge benefit to the hospitals, you know, the doctors who are making those evaluations and determining whether the person needs to be hospitalized or not. But what's happening is that they're erring on the side of caution, and so the deflection rates, we were hoping with our telepsych, has not happened. We're probably at about a 20 to 30% deflection rate, but we're hoping with that initial upfront face-to-face assessment, right where the person's at, that that staff person from Plains Area that is accompanying law enforcement, that they can, you know, talk that person down, calm the situation, and then maybe it's just a follow-up with an outpatient appointment the next day.
And that's a new core service?
Correct. That's one of the eight core services regions have to have.
The only other thing I wanted to bring up, and it's just, it's initial, and so I think that's fair, is the Crisis Center. We have been in some talks with Sioux Rivers as to whether or not there's a cost-sharing agreement or some opportunity to bridge that gap. We know it's something that they need, but don't necessarily have the costs to budget for, and it's something that we need as well. And we do have the costs, but they have a current building, and so we're just trying to bridge that gap. And we had a discussion the other day, and hope that, without saying, I guess, much more than that, that talks are productive.
They are. And Shane Walters from Sioux Rivers and Sheila Martin and I are going to be having a meeting, I believe, tentatively, January 9, so we hopefully can come to some kind of an agreement as to how that's going to be funded.
That's encouraging, because that's, you know, that's one of the big question marks on the table, and, you know, I think it would make sense to sell it to us, but at the same time, you know, I see their concerns, so.
Any other questions for me? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming, and thank you for all the meetings you had with all the providers. I think that was very productive.
Thank you.
All right, no other comments there, Jeremy? All right, moving on.
Appreciate you making the trip, and many, many trips this way. And one last thing, and I'm not sure if I mentioned this before, but Dawn plans to present the budget for Woodbury County, and so I think that that will be a nice addition to have her here, and you get to your other counties, your other seven counties, how often?
At least twice per year, depending on what is happening in our regional health that tends to be informed of. So I usually give out a bunch of time and then update it this summer.
I think that's very appreciated, you know, that that will be.
The only other thing that I would mention is, with the budget discussion, we're going to be looking at 2080, the Calhoun County, 2080, they need to get that done.
Sounds good. Get it on the agenda, and I don't see an issue with it. All right, moving on to reports on committee meetings. Don't know too many that had maybe a committee between the 26th and now.
Just a heads up, it's not really a committee meeting, but we had evaluations that you should receive copies of, two more in your tills need to be signed by the department directors. If there's anything added, we'll add those after the fact, but didn't want you to think that the year had sunset without some due diligence.
The sheriff and I were on the Outback Committee Bowl meeting. We're glad to report good results there.
I took a year off. That's right. Maybe next year.
I have a question on committees. We passed the third judicial, but we didn't say who it was going to be. That's not that I've been serving on?
That's, was it not you on the agenda?
There was no name on it.
There was not? Okay.
That's the one I saw, it was blank.
Okay.
Unless they filled one in later, but, so that is still going to be mine?
Yeah, that's, I.
That's all I needed to know.
I do have all the committees coming up for next agenda, so I'll bring that up at board concerns here.
That's fine. They just sent me an email, and I said, "I don't know yet." And then I saw on the back of material, it was a blank certificate with no name on it.
Pat, did we have to put somebody on that since it was on?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
What's this one, Marty?
That's the two resolutions you passed.
Oh, okay.
Everyone just assumed that Marty was still on that when we voted on that, on the consent agenda? All right, sounds like that's the case. Moving on to item 22, citizen concerns, and mostly media, media concerns. Moving on to board concerns, item 23. So, looking at committees, some of the special project committees, we had the building and project committee, did that need to continue?
We'll have to coordinate that with the board office to determine which ones are still meeting or not.
Okay.
And you will appoint those.
Yep.
Approved it.
The long-term planning facility, and then there was the Ag Expo, was that one? Okay, we'll get that figured out. Any other board concerns?
Mr. Chair, maybe we could back up? I was a little surprised that we went back to the way we used to do things, where we nominated the chair with no discussion. So could you take a moment to introduce your hopes for this year?
Sure thing.
Also like to ask if, in order to set expectations, if you'll support a budget with a tax rate increase? Just hope to hear from you on why you want to be chair, now you're chair.
First off, I would like to thank you guys for your vote of support. I know you may be fearing the impending jokes over the next year. I do look forward to serving as chair. One thing I would like to see us come together as departments and do a little strategic planning over the, to plan ahead for the next few years. We've had a lot of our building committee meetings, we've looked at a lot of projects for the courthouse itself and for the LEC, and I think it's just time to start planning out when we're going to take those next steps, and we need to have those meetings with Kenny and with, you know, with Dave and his staff and all those involved to really kind of come together with a timeline. Couple other quality-of-life things I'd kind of like to pursue is maybe creating a couple committees, one for a potential ATV park, and I talked to Mark about this, but I'd like to work together too with conservation, looking at areas out by correction bill for that, and also for maybe kind of reinvigorating that concept or talk of a canoe kayak trail that went down the Little Sioux, starting from Cherokee, going all the way down to, say, Anton or even beyond. So a couple quality-of-life things, I think, you know, when you look at a lot of the problems we're facing in our county today, you know, unemployment's at record lows, and we have a housing crisis, you know, but how are we going to get people here? How are we going to increase that quality of life? And I think that's, as a goal or a target over the next year, something I'd like to focus on, so. And then on the budget, of course, I would like to see us, you know, hold the line at the levy rate we're at or below, so.
Thank you. Timing of budget meetings going forward, the same, different?
Is the schedule any different from what he's proposed, what Dennis has proposed? 2/15 is what? I'd like him to start at?
I know we did make some changes today.
Okay, well, obviously, we moved 2 back to the 15th as well, so.
Did he? Did he have a schedule?
Were you not next week?
Right next week?
I thought so. I don't have the schedule with me either.
It's in the binder. It's the first few pages.
I know, I'm on... January 22nd, Dave.
Oh, Sheriff, yeah, January 22nd.
I think that it was a civil service, but we, that was pretty non-con.
Yeah, 2/15. Let's see. Yeah, so January 15th at 2/15, and then January 22nd for the Sheriff at 2/15.
What's that? Hey, I got to up to the bathroom before I turn it off today, so I'm making progress. I want that noted.
I leave mine on the desk.
Smarter than that.
Yeah, yeah, let me note that.
All righty.
I was just going to bring up one thing, is the seating arrangements with the chair people. If you wanted to consider that, is the way that you're sitting at this table, the legislature already has done it traditionally by seniority, and then kind of drew lots. If you're okay with that, we can do that, or I'm just bringing it up if anybody's getting tired of sitting next to somebody else.
You're not bringing this up because of my bad breath or anything?
Growing accustomed with this vantage point.
If everybody's okay with that, that's okay.
By height.
I just don't like sitting next to Jeremy.
I knew there was an underround in this.
All right, any other concerns? Seeing none, we are adjourned.